Okay, good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to welcome you to the January eighteenth meeting of the Jefferson County Board of Education. The purpose of this meeting is for the discussion and recommendation for approval of revised JCPS COVID-19 School Operations Plan. Dr. Polio will present the plan to us. After that time, each board member will have an opportunity to share their thoughts or ask questions. And after that, we will call for a vote. That is the only thing on the agenda this evening. So at this point, without waiting any longer, I would like to call on Dr. Polio to get us started on the presentation, please. Thank you, everyone, for being here for this special call meeting. We don't do this all the time, but when we do it, there's a reason. So thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Dr. Polio.
Thank you, Chair Porter. Appreciate the board members getting together here on short notice, but we wanted to. Our presentation will not be long tonight as we are only asking for one approval and some changes, some limited changes to our guidance and our operating, school operations plan around COVID-19. So we would ask for your authorization to do that. As you know, the past few weeks have been very difficult and challenging. We talked about that last week. And clearly, right now, we are at, this week being in non-traditional instruction as well. So at the end of this week, we will have used eight of our ten NTI days. So we will have two days remaining that we could use for NTI. And then also, we will be, I'll be updating you briefly. The governor signed into law on Friday Senate Bill twenty-five, which allows for ten remote learning days, and I'll discuss how those are slightly different. But we do need your authorization to use those in the future as well as it's written in statute. So you know our guiding principles. We've gone through this. Now we're closing in on two years that we've done this work. I did want to bring to you the process, the timeline that has taken place over really the past week as we received new guidance. So last Monday, January tenth, at four thirty, we received the guidance from Kentucky Public Health. A few days earlier than that, the Centers for Disease Control issued their new guidance as we have always done. Although people do want us to act on the CDC guidance, we have, in each and every instance, waited for Kentucky Public Health to bring their recommendations to us before recommending any changes to you. And almost always, they have followed the CDC guidance. Now, I did express, talked to some folks at the U.S. Department of Education today and did express some desire that, you know, if there's discussions around changing the CDC guidance from schools, that we get a little more forewarning, at least that the discussion is taking place so that we can bring and begin discussing that potential with you. But just like everyone else, we received the guidance right at the same time that I think everyone else did. We waited until Monday at four thirty. We had that guidance, as you know, last Tuesday. We had a board meeting, which was too soon, obviously, to get it in front of you at that time without having discussions within the district, with our union partners, with employees as we move forward. So on Wednesday, January twelfth, we had our first meeting with our union partners. As you know, we have five distinct unions, so we wanted to discuss it with them, take their questions. The next day, we conferred with Louisville Health Department, who also endorsed this new guidance as well. And then the next day, we asked for a specially called board meeting from you that we put out for today. Also today, once again, we met a second time with our union partners to answer questions and ensure they were on board with the new guidance. And so the changes that we are asking, simply put, I think this graphic was the best that the Kentucky Public Health Department put out to show us what changes would go into our plan, and it is all based on isolation and quarantine. So first and foremost, this is for schools with universal masking, as you know that we have. So the isolation period now for individuals in schools with universal masking would go from ten days to five days if the person is asymptomatic. So that's change number one, ten days to five days. There would be no need for contact tracing for at-school exposures and no quarantining needed for at-school exposures. And then the fourth one is those quarantine individuals who are not up to date with their COVID-19 vaccination, who are exposed in their home, for instance, would have to be home for at least five days and less participating in our test to stay, which you have improved. There are a couple of exceptions to this that I wanted to highlight that I think is important. And so we will still contact trace for early childhood, which is a requirement. So that will continue to take place. We will also continue to contact trace for extracurricular activities and athletics for those that can't have masks while they participate. So those would be the exceptions to that. Once again, early childhood, and it would be athletics as well, extracurricular athletics and activities where a mask might not be present. And so just highlighting our mitigation efforts inside of our plan, once again, you know, I continue to speak with superintendents all over the country and think we are doing an exceptional amount of mitigation work, testing, vaccinations. But you know, we have mask mandate. We do have masks available, KN95 masks, to schools for employees are available at every site. We have voluntary testing available weekly in schools and work sites all across the district. Drive-through testing at fifty sites for our test to stay and our test to play program, as you know, as I say there, the test to stay and our test to play. So once again, our recommendations, if you could go back one slide, I just want to highlight them, once again, the changes we will be asking you to do are in line with CDC, the Kentucky Public Health Department and Metro Louisville Health Department. And I, you know, I just want to say, once again, we've said along the way that we would follow their guidance, and I believe every one of my recommendations has followed the Kentucky Public Health guidance, and that's isolation goes from ten to five days, no contact tracing from schools. We would not do the quarantining for school exposures, and then quarantining for individuals at home would be five days if they are exposed outside of school. That's what we are asking for changes to our guidance. Our second authorization we are asking, I don't have a slide for this, but I did want to talk about this, was Senate Bill twenty-five with remote days. So we first off have to know non-traditional instruction days. We have ten of those that have been given to us by the General Assembly for the 2021, 2022 school year. That is the traditional non-NTI days that we are in right now, that we have been used to for the past few years where we can send the entire district into NTI. We didn't use any of those in the first semester. We used four last week. We will be using four this week. That will be eight. That will give us two remaining NTI days for the remainder of the year. As I said last week, once we reach ten, there is no such thing as NTI anymore for this academic year. So if we are not having school, our only two options at that point would be to cancel school, but if we don't have enough employees, would be to cancel school and add those hours somewhere else, most likely at the end of the year. And our second option with your approval would be remote days that were authorized and signed in by the governor on Friday. The difference between NTI and remote days is essentially, we cannot have the entire district. All students cannot be in remote days. So for us to use remote days, students, some students would have to be in-person school, and they are used more to identify. We could use them for individual schools. We could use them for certain levels, like we could say, high school might be remote days, elementary and middle might be in-person. But we would have to have some go to school. That is the major component that is different in remote days. We cannot send the entire district NTI. With your approval, we would have ten of those. It is challenging as how to use those, but obviously, we think it's an increased flexibility that we would need. So we would ask tonight for you all to grant authorization for us to also have those, for me to issue those remote learning days when necessary. So once again, our recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the revised COVID-19 School Operations Plan and authorize the superintendent to temporarily assign students to remote instruction. That concludes our presentation, Chair Porter.
Thank you, Dr. Polio. I will now call on board members for their thoughts and comments. We will use the timer for five minutes. If you ask a question that takes up the whole five minutes, then we will give you another five minutes and then come back to you if you have additional questions. So with your approval, Board Member McIntosh, I'd like to start with you, please, ma'am, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Just a few questions. One is kind of logistical. As far as if we are utilizing HB twenty-five days or those remote learning days, is that something that those substitute census or all that information will be taken care of at the board? Or is that something that will involve the principals at the affected schools?
You mean use of the remote days?
Yes, sir.
They would be done at the board level. So the superintendent, with your approval, it has to be granted, the superintendent has to make the decision to do that. We would work through the same process we do, which principals are a part of this. Just so you know, our process right now, principals report their, you know, absences, our expected absences based on COVID data to the assistant superintendents who meet with them to discuss those that are going to have significant issues with staffing. Then the assistant superintendents meet with us, and we discuss those specific schools that might have problems. And first, obviously, we look to send central office staff to address those needs when necessary, if we can. But if it gets too much, where there's too many schools and we don't have enough personnel, that's when we make a decision for NTI. We would do the same thing with remote days. So we would have discussions with principals, but the decision would lie with me.
Okay. And I've got a couple of questions that have been asked by parents and teachers. So if it is a remote learning day, do the teachers still report to the building?
Yes, they would. By statute, it's like NTI. They would have, the only, the only exception would be, and I'll say this, just so everyone knows, we do have weather coming in later this week. If we change to an NTI weather day, it still counts as one of our ten NTI days, but an NTI weather day allows staff to teach from home. So if we do call an NTI weather day, they're allowed to stay home. NTI COVID days, they must go to their work location.
Okay, thank you. Since it would not necessarily be going out to the entire district, if a, if a family's school is affected by a remote learning day, what communication should they look for so that they know and are aware?
Yeah, well, that's my hesitation, you know, as when you talk about a district with a hundred and fifty-five, to start just listing off these schools are in and these schools are out. That could be very confusing when you're, you know, I think when you have a district of five or six schools, it's much easier to say these two are out and these other four or five are in. So that, that's a challenge for us, but that's why I would anticipate us looking more at levels so that, you know, if we needed to say, you know, elementary schools have a tendency to be able to go because there's less employees in the building, and so less movement amongst kids. So we can, you know, many times say elementary and focus all of our support going to elementary schools, and then possibly middle and high would be in remote learning. That's just an example of what we could do. But our communication, we're hoping it to be more along those lines as opposed to, here's a hundred and fifty-five schools, these seventy-five are in and these eighty are out. That's, that's what we really want to stay away from.
Right, and I agree with that. And then my final question is, I've had a couple of teachers ask that the COVID days that they're given, excuse me, I'm sick myself, if their school is closed but their child's school is open, are they able to use those COVID days or will they be required to use six days?
Well, their school wouldn't be closed, their school, you know, if it's, there would be remote instruction. And so, Dr. Greenweb, could you answer that, please?
Yes, so we would certainly review the circumstances for the teachers, depending on whether the child's school is closed or not in person, and if the teacher's was in person or not. We'd have to examine those. That's gonna be a case-by-case basis.
Okay, so if that happens, how much notice would they have maybe that their, their kid's school isn't going to be in person and they would need to make arrangements? I know that's a, that's a problem for everyone in the community, but I was specifically asked, so I thought I would ask, I would pass that question on to you all.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a challenge we'll have to tackle, and we'll obviously do that this week. I can't say we'll have a perfect answer for that, but you know, that is, that is the challenge. I've talked with other superintendents about some being in and some being out.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving next to a board member, Dr. Chris.
Thank you, Chair Porter. So I guess, I think this is probably a question for Eva, but if we're not contact tracing except in early childhood, does that mean that, I assume that means that if, for instance, my child is exposed to COVID at school, they won't notify me? Like, I'll never know that, will I?
You will. It, it, there'll be a letter that goes home to every class. So when there's a student in a classroom that has COVID, there'll be a notice go home to parents, but instead of the school-wide notice, the way it's been, it'll be per class, and that will give them instructions and monitor for symptoms, that kind of thing.
So what does, what are we changing then when we say no contact tracing?
Really, it is to, for the schools to have to go look for those kids that were within three feet for fifteen minutes or longer, notification to go to those parents, giving them the option for test to stay. Those things would, would not be in place for those situations.
So if my kid is exposed to somebody not in his class, he would not, which, you know, really shouldn't happen, but I would not be notified?
You would if. So at the elementary level, it's going to be more, you know, on a smaller, at the, at the middle and high school level, where they change classes, that notice is going to have to go home to the classes that student is in.
Well, again, though, if, if my, at the elementary level, if my kid is exposed to somebody who has COVID, but it's, he's not in the same classroom, do I get a notification? And if so, then what's the, I'm still struggling to see the difference between what we're doing now and no contact tracing.
You would. It, it's, so they'll still know where that child was, and so that notice will go home to where that child interacted with other people.
So are we just saying that they don't, like, I'll get notified, but I don't have to then do?
To stay at home and quarantine or do test to stay. That is correct.
So I can't, so my kid can just go back to school the next day like nothing happened?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Why are we, so, and tell me if I'm reading this wrong, but in the state guidelines, it sounds like if you're exposed to COVID somewhere outside of school, that you have to be tested. But if you're exposed inside of school, you don't have to be tested. What is the logic to that?
So let me go back and say also, with the notification that would go home to parents when there's, you know, somebody, their child's been around that has COVID, one of the things that'll tell them to do is to monitor for symptoms. So that, that symptom monitoring is still supposed to be a piece of what's happening. And then the testing, I think you're talking about testing at day five, six, or seven after somebody has been exposed to COVID, and that is, that recommendation's still going to be in place. And so that's part of the protocols our school nurses have. It's written into their standing orders that they can do that test. So if a parent wanted their child just to have that test for them to know, they could either request it be done at school, or they could use the drive-through sites to have it done.
Okay, I'm still confused, but so one of the things, so it says, you know, the, the exceptions for test to stay are, quote, "if both students wore well-fitting masks the entire time." What, what is a well-fitting mask? And who determines that?
That, the CDC defines a well-fitting mask, so they have their guidelines, and, and that means there's not gaps in the mask or that it covers their nose.
It could be cloth, it could be surgical, right?
Yes, the CDC has, yes.
Okay, so is that, I mean, it sounds to me that that exception to test to stay is practically universal, that, you know, unless, like, who, how are we going to know if somebody did not wear a well-fitting mask the entire time they were close to somebody? Who's going to make that determination?
That, there, there won't be any way really overall to document that. That's where the screening testing and the symptom monitoring and those things are going to be crucial for implementation.
Okay, so again, this is a comment, my comment, you know, the exception to test to stay is practically universal. I mean, we know too that, you know, I, I have parents sending me photos from schools and some of our quote-unquote better schools, you know, that their kids send them of kids, you know, not wearing masks. I mean, you know, wearing them very, like, around their chin or whatever. Universal masking is a, is a fiction that, you know, we like to believe in. So I, you know, personally, I don't even think that to say a school has universal masking and therefore you don't have to do X, Y, Z, to me, you know, that criteria that just doesn't apply because masking is so spotty, even, I mean, and I know people are working really hard in schools to make sure people wear their masks, but, you know, there's thousands of kids in these schools and they're eating and drinking and sleeping and not having their masks on. You know, universal masking is a fiction that I think we should just remember doesn't, doesn't exist when we look at these sorts of things. What, um, the, one of the other things, and I apologize, I have all these notes, but I can't remember exactly what it refers to, but at some point, you know, there's, there's an important determination or important difference between symptomatic and asymptomatic. Who makes the determination if someone is asymptomatic?
So that'll be part of the communication to parents, but then this, the second part of that will be at the school level, and that's where school nurses are going to have to be following up with students who've been out that are positive. And I, and-
Do they, like, ask questions of people?
They do an assessment. And so, and one thing I think that's important to say, because some of the structures that you all have helped implement in the district are really what has helped us do so well as far as COVID management. One of those things is the electronic health record that we use called Health Office Anywhere because it's got a, a COVID monitoring feature. And so when nurses, so every school has a, a list or a specific COVID dashboard that lets them know the students that are on quarantine and isolation. And so what happens is the nurse is supposed to monitor that and follow up with those students who have been out, for example, that have been positive. But they, when they do those assessments, they document, and that's what also helps us to monitor symptoms and, and to be able to do that follow-up.
So at, at another point, it says, you know, everyone who thinks they may have COVID-19 should stay away from schools. But then it goes on to list a number of symptoms that COVID-19 can include, and it includes things like a headache. So does that mean that everybody who has a headache needs to get tested before they come to a school, or do they just assume they have COVID if they have a headache and they stay home?
So there's a couple ways to do, if that was identified at school, that student would be sent to the nurse, and that nurse would do an assessment for any other symptoms, and the onsite COVID testing is made available. And if, if a parent doesn't want that test done at school, then the nurse will have a conversation with that parent to recommend that they go ahead and be tested. And so, so the answer is yes, there, there is some personal responsibility in this for all of us. And so sometimes, yeah, those kids come to school with symptoms, and then sometimes we identify that at school and the follow-up is done there.
What if I'm a teacher and I have a headache? Is it my responsibility to report that or to get a test?
They do actually. Teachers fill out, staff fill out a daily health screener, and it, if, if they have symptoms, they're calling in to health services to get that assessment and recommendations.
Okay, good. But again, we're dependent upon, if a kid tells their mom at seven in the morning before school, hey, I have a headache, and the mom sends him to school with a little Tylenol or something before administered before school, you know, we don't really have any way of knowing that that person's experiencing symptoms, do we?
No, we don't. And it's been that way, really. We've had children come to school who have COVID, and, you know, we've been in that same sort of situation. The, the good part about the mitigation measures is prior to Omicron, we never had a positivity rate above two. And so, you know, we, we were able to, even though, yes, there are some situations that have fallen through the cracks, overall, you know, people have, have been following those guidelines.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, that, to me, it, it's great that what we're doing seems to be working pretty well, which just makes me more convinced that we should keep doing what we're doing if it's working so well. You know, Ms. Porter, I, I may have more comments in a second, but I just want to wrap up my time now by saying, I think, you know, all we're, all we're doing here is lowering the bar. I mean, this is like saying, you know, oh, you can't get an A? Well, I'll tell you what, we're going to make an eighty percent an A, you know, because we can't have school with ten-day quarantine. So you know what? Nothing has changed about COVID, nothing has changed about the risk factors, nothing has changed, but we know we can't have school with ten days as much as we want. So we're just going to make it easier and send people to school that may still be symptomatic. And I understand why you brought this forward, Dr. Polio. It falls in line with what, you know, the procedure you've used in the past, but we, at this point, we've got to decouple, I think, from CDC and state guidance. I mean, those are, you know, those are political appointees that are making these recommendations, you know, at the behest of politicians, you know. What we're doing now is working, you know, and if there's too much COVID in the community to have school, there's too much COVID in the community to have school. There's nothing that a school system can do about that in other parts of this community. I've got to step up and take some responsibility for mitigating COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. We will come back to you after other board members have had an opportunity to speak. If you have other comments, thank you for the questions and the responses. I'd like to move now to Dr. Schull, please.
Thank you, Chair Porter. I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. So I will move next to Board Member Duncan.
Just a couple of things. I, I know I've heard reports that say that after five days, after the five-day period of quarantine, when a student or staff member returns, they still are likely contagious. So coming back with masks is so crucial. And it's like Dr. Cobb was saying, the insistence on masking all the time is very difficult to enforce. So are we, are we going to look at the type of mask after, after the five days, or do we just continue with, well, any mask and as long as most of the time they keep it on? Because, yeah, it's still, there's a period of time where that person still is probably contagious. So that makes no difference on, on our masking requirements? Is that right?
Eva, can you address that first, and then I'll follow up with additional information?
Yeah, the guidelines themselves don't address any recommendations specifically for masking. We have, have gotten some additional masks and are awaiting more to make them available. So that certainly is, you know, the KN95 masks are being recommended, and that certainly is an option. But yes, we have, we have different types of masks available that could be worn.
Would that be an option for students that return or just for staff?
We'll have them for students as well, so yes, it could be.
Okay, I think that, that sounds good and gives me a little bit more hope there. The only other question I have is about our remote learning days, and you talked about, Dr. Polio- And you talked about Dr. Polio using those maybe by level, uh elementary, middle, or high school level. Is there anything that would stop us from saying everybody but a few in one level? Where this is, is, I mean, everybody else on remote learning but a few? Uh, or is that too, still too confusing? Or, or would we be viewed as, as skirting around what the remote learning requirement is?
Well, according to the statute, that would be acceptable. The statute just says that remote days cannot be looked, used for, and paraphrasing, but pretty close. Uh, remote learning days cannot be used for every student in the district. Uh, so those are some options that we could weigh um and take a look at. You know, in the end, we want to, you know, obviously get as many kids into in-person learning as we can safely. But we also know we want it to be clear and concise um and make the right decisions, which can be challenging with a hundred and fifty-five schools. I said that last week at my press event that, uh, how hard it would be to, to make these decisions with so many schools. And so, but I do think that, that does add some flexibility. But to answer your question, yes, that would fit in with the law.
Okay, very good. Uh, you know, one of the things that is not being explained, I think, very well is, is what's triggering our NTI is our staff shortage, not necessarily all of the, the cases that are out there. And um our, our parents need to understand that we uh, we do this. That, that staff shortage may be reduced somewhat by this reduction in the quarantine period. But it's not going to solve, it's not going to stall, solve our sta- staff shortage. And I think some people are thinking that it will solve it, but it, it still will not. Uh, five days of quarantining, uh, if we had seven hundred and thirty-eight teachers out five days, seven hundred and thirty-eight teachers without uh our classes or we would have students without those teachers. And somebody has to cover that. So it's not, uh, it, it's not a cure-all for us. But uh it, I hope that it can help us. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
And I would add, I agree with you a hundred percent. It is not a, it's not a fix to um the problems of staffing when you have over seven hundred or approximately seven hundred staff members um who are on quarantine or isolation. It may reduce that number, but it's still problematic. I will say, as a compliment to our schools, and a little bit to Dr. Colb's point, but a compliment to our schools on the mitigation efforts, yes, not perfect. But when we look at the positivity rate, is the community as a whole is nearing thirty-four percent right now at last report. You know, our current positivity rate on our tests from our schools is about seventeen and a half percent. Uh, so we're really looking at about half the amount based on our, and I would, you know, anecdotally relate that to our mitigation efforts that we have in schools. So not perfect, uh, but it is uh reducing that number inside of our schools.
Is that all, Ms. Duncan?
Yes, ma'am, that's it.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Board Member Marshall?
Uh, thank you, Chair Porter. I'll jump into my few questions that I have. So first, is some, make sure that I'm getting this correct. Based on new guidelines, if someone, a student, staff, teacher, tests positive for COVID, they have to quarantine and isolate for five days. And then they are able to return back to the school building without having a negative test. Is that correct?
If they're asymptomatic, that is correct.
So if they are still experiencing symptoms, then they are still able to isolate for as long as it takes to get rid of those symptoms?
That is correct, up to ten days.
Okay, so I think we know, because we've been through this for two years now, that even people that are asymptomatic can still spread the virus. So some of my concerns are around uh students at lunchtime. Are we given any special instruction to help schools deal with the kid who returns back after five days? Says I'm asymptomatic, no symptoms. Um, we know based on what we've been told uh and learned about this virus that that person uh is more than likely still contagious. Are we helping schools with anything for how they ought to deal with that kid when they have to have their mask off, eating lunch, or uh even athletes that are going to go to practice? Are we dealing with any of those circumstances?
Um, those are good questions, Mr. Marshall. I'll let Eva, do you want to weigh in on that?
So those are some uh specific questions that were asked of the CDC and really at the state. And the objective is to, for mealtimes in particular, to make sure that students are six feet apart when they're unmasked who are in that circumstance. As far as athletes go, because that's a group that there would still be contact tracing. So those athletes, when that player returns, there, there isn't a provision for the player to not be masked. And so KHSA is supposed to be giving some additional guidance on that. But that mask requirement is for anybody who comes back after five days um before that, that ten-day period. Does that make sense? So that mitigation strategy still has to be in place for them to be able to have that shortened quarantine.
Okay. And then in regards to our teachers and our other staff members, uh, after five days, you know, they're still uh not feeling up to return to work. Uh, how are we gonna deal with those situations? Um, I mean, are we playing detective and saying, oh, you're not really symptomatic, you're just saying you are? Are we going to be in a situation where we're forcing, you know, people to come back into the building earlier than when they're ready?
No, we will not do that. I mean, uh, it will just be a matter of them reporting as symptomatic.
Okay. And I know we've had conversations with our union partners. Can we share any of the main concerns that our union partners had? And uh how we were able to rectify those concerns to get them on board with this?
Uh, the main concern today was that the screener, the employee screener was still taking place, which it is. You know, we reiterated that there are no other changes to our guidance other than the ones I just laid out to you. So employees will still have to screen upon entrance into their work site. I think that was the main concern. Other than that, it seemed once we um solidified that, that um, um, their questions were answered.
Okay. And any other uh information that we received from the Health Department? You know, in, in regards to, you know, current community spread and um how this will either help? Or do they have some concerns that this might, you know, stretch uh our positivity rate and cause it to climb, anything of that nature?
I'll say this, I have not gotten any concerns from the three levels. Now, obviously, I didn't have conversations with the CDC, but from the State Health Department to the local Health Department, our team did not um hear any concerns. Eva, did you, and she would be the one to address whether she heard any concerns.
So I, I mean, I will start that by saying, which, you know, as I've told Dr. Polio, change makes me incredibly nervous because we're changing our processes. And when we, when we're in a good place, we're changing our processes. But I trust that they, that they're doing this based on the data that they have and that this is, this is a good move for us. But I meet with them every week and we look at our data. We look at our data compared to, to their data and um discuss the, the measures that we have in place. So without question, I know if, if those numbers start to go off, again, I'll say these, these monitoring systems that we have in place are just what, what we're gonna have to pay particular attention to to see if this is having an adverse effect on our families and community.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think that you, you said it. Uh, uh, we have worked extremely hard and in many cases got in ahead of the game on some mitigation efforts. And the things we're doing are working. You know, my biggest concern with this is shorten this quarantine and isolation time is we're gonna have to take people's word on whether or not they really are ready to come back, if they have symptoms or if they don't. And it could put additional stresses on staff and those in the building. And personally, I haven't seen, you know, when we made these other decisions, it seemed that the decisions being made were in line with what the scientific community was saying about the virus. I just don't feel that's the case this time. Uh, I feel like this was made for other reasons. Um, and frankly, I, I just don't know uh if the information is there for me personally to feel confident. You know, even as a parent, if I know that I'm sending my kid to school and that there could be someone in the, in the classroom with them that is positive. And we already know that that's probably the case because we're not catching every single case of COVID in our buildings as is. So personally, to put more positive cases that we do know into the building with those we don't, um, I, I'm just not confident that, you know, it's going to get the results that we need and really give our children what they need at the end of the day. So I appreciate it, Chair Porter. That is my time.
Thank you, Board Member Marshall. Uh, Board Member Craig, if you have any questions or comments, please.
I'm not able to share comments at the moment. I am comfortable with the recommendation and was able to get my questions asked directly from staff. Uh, thank you, Chair Porter.
Thank you. Uh, I have a few questions to ask. Uh, we have mentioned uh in our conversation more than, more than one board member about filling out this he- health screener daily. How do we know people are doing it? Everybody is completing that form? What, what is our proof that that is being taken care of for all staff members? How do we know that?
Eva or Dr. Greenweb, if you would like to address that?
I, I, you know, I can start. So the screener, every supervisor has the ability to mo- to look at a report um and see. Now, their biggest frustration often is that it's um the system updates from UNICEF. So people may change locations and so on. But the main point of the screener, there are some places too where they have elect um paper versions for people to fill out when they come in. But all staff have been notified and reminded, communication sends out lots of reminders about doing that daily health screener and to contact health services if they have symptoms.
So there, how do we know that that is truly happening? Because I can say that I'm going to do it and not do it. It's kind, I want to kind of go back to what Board Member Marshall was saying. We're putting a lot of trust uh for folks. So how do we monitor to know how many people and where these people are located that are filling out their screener every day? I think that's very critical for us to know. So is there a process in place that tells you?
We can, there is a process, but we can follow back up with supervisors and make sure that they're familiar with the process and remind them of the process.
Okay, and I didn't mean to cut you off, Dr. Amy Greenweb. So if you have something to share, please do so.
I didn't have any more. Eva said exactly what I was going to say.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's a concern. I will say that I've gotten emails and texts about that. So we, again, people are very anxious about some of the, the, what we're allowing people to do or not do. I want to uh ask a question about the mask and the uh what we're presenting to the public, uh, our health guidance. We don't actually state in there that we talk about masks being required, masks being worn, whether inside, outside. Should we put in this document that masks are provided in schools so people know that? And there's no question about that. I don't see that it's written in the document that the district is providing masks. I mean, we've upgraded the masks not only for staff but for students, but it's not written in this document. Should it be in the document, Dr. Polio?
I think we can add that. I think that's a great point. Not, um, I will make sure the document note uh puts that in there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the section that talks about quarantine and contact tracing, it says that each school has a, a healthy school officer. But now we are changing the numbers, making the numbers lower. So does each school only have one healthy school officer? Because we have schools with student population that could be as low as four hundred and as high as sixteen hundred or more. So we have one person in the school that's doing that. And who is that person? Is that an additional task for an administrator, like an assistant principal or counselor? Who's given that job to do? That's my question, Dr. Polio.
Dr. Stone, could you answer that, please?
Sure. So when the state originally put out guidance, when we first came back to school, they asked that every school appoint a healthy at-school officer. So that's where that came from. Our large schools, so every school, again, this school year started, they named somebody their healthy-at-school officer. And really, they're the point of contact, but they're not necessarily the person who's doing all the work. Every school kind of have set things up the way they wanted to. But because of the volume of work, um, of course, you all funded putting nurses in all the schools to help with the contact tracing and follow-up, which has been a huge help. And then we've put nursing assistants in the middle and high schools as well to help keep up and manage all that work. So it's not all on that, just the healthy-at-school officer.
And who is the designated person? Is that an administrator? Is that a teacher? Is that a counselor? Who, who, who has that job? Is just each school determine who that person is?
Each school determines who that is, but most of the time it's an administrator.
Okay, so that's additional work for the administrator, correct? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have one more question and then I'll go back to uh Dr. Chris, who I think had some additional questions. Uh, in the document that we received, it talks about cleaning and disinfecting. And uh I continue to get questions about cleaning and disinfecting. And we are saying that we will continue to clean the facilities carefully. And cleaning once a day, daily, is enough to sufficiently remove potential virus that may be on surfaces and the high-touch areas. My question is, as the numbers continue to grow for staff and students, who are the people that are, have the opportunity to do the, the cleaning of the facility? And at what point do we determine that we need to start sanitizing the building itself? Not just school buildings, but buildings like Van Nuys, CB Young, and places like that? Because we have so much in and out with uh people that may have had COVID come back. Sometimes people show up and then have to go out again within three to five days. So I'm very concerned for all staff and all students about how clean, how sanitized, and how safe the buildings are. And Dr. Polio, I would like for you to speak to that and anybody else that needs to speak to that. Because I understand we don't have the staff we need. That's a national issue. But the question is, what are we doing for JCPS to ensure that our students, our staff, and our families are going to be safe? So that is my question about cleaning and disinfecting. And when I get that answer, I will turn it back over to Dr. Chris. Dr. Polio?
I'll say this first of all, and I'll let Eva, if she could talk about um airborne versus, you know, what's on a surface and how that research has changed around that. But we ensure every building has custodial staff. And, and I know in the midst of staff shortages, we work as hard as we can to make sure that it's clean. Obviously, we prioritize schools first, but we still want to make sure we have personnel in our central office buildings as well to do the cleaning that's necessary. Dr. Stone, can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Yeah, so early on, there was lots of worry with COVID and surfaces. And while there, there's still some caution, the CDC just recommends a daily cleaning of, of high-touch surfaces in particular. And so, again, cleanliness is very important. But we know that the, the most significant way that COVID is spread is impacted by the masking. And the masking and those, the, the screening testing and the vaccinations are really the, the best tools that we have to, to prevent COVID.
Okay, um, one other question to be answered later. I would like for the board to understand how many custodians we have in our schools on the day shift and the night shift. Because I'm very concerned about the schools that have one custodian at night. That is a concern. I'm not asking the question. I would like the board to receive a list by district, the custodians in the day and the custodians at night that are being asked to do this work. Dr. Chris, I'll turn it back to you for another five minutes, sir. Ten at maximum, if you have other questions.
Thank you, Chair Porter. I, my, I forgot to ask my most basic question initially, which was, why are we considering this? What, what's wrong with what we're currently doing?
Well, I've just said, uh, Dr. Cole, from the very beginning, that, you know, we had a process when the CDC made changes to their at-school guidance that we then followed the Kentucky State Health Guidance. Um, you know, we did not move quickly when that happened because we wanted to bring it to you all and discuss it with you. But that is the state guidance that we've worked under from the very beginning and in line with Metro Health um and those experts, you know, we want to continue our guidance in line with those. We've done that from the very beginning. Uh, so that's why I'm bringing this.
I, you know, there are, we have gone beyond what the state has required before, you know. I, you know, there are, we have gone beyond what the state has required before, you know, particularly with, uh, when we got out in front of universal masking, you know, which was not something that was required at the time. So, you know, there is a precedent for going beyond what the state has said. And I think that we've seen really good results, um, from doing that. So I'm, I'm hesitant to, to alter course when there, you know, isn't a really good reason. I mean, I, you know, I, I don't, you know, want to put words in your mouth, but you know, I, what I heard was, well, the state, the state says we can do this, so therefore we are going to do this. I mean, that's not, to me, that doesn't really answer the question of why. And, you know, in the absence of a, of a, a clear answer to the question of why, I'm inclined to, I, I don't see why we would change what we're doing now, which appears to be working. You know, I'm, I'm a big proponent of if it's not broken, don't fix it. And what I heard, uh, and Eva, correct me if I'm putting words in your mouth, but what I heard you say is that it makes me nervous when we change our processes when we're getting good results. So, um, again, I don't understand why we, we, we would change our processes when we're getting good results. You know, the, to Mr. Marshall's point, um, you know, there's, we're relying upon hundreds of thousands of people in this community. If we adopt these measures, we're relying on them to be vigilant and to be accurate in determining if they're still at risk of transmitting COVID. And, you know, that level of subjective judgment, we've proven as a city and country cannot be relied on. I mean, that's why we're in the situation we are now is because we've just kind of left it up to individuals to, to tell us, you know, entrusted their judgment that, oh, you know, I'm safe, I'm doing this. And that's, that's why we are, that's why we are where we are now. There's a really easy way to check up on this subjective judgment, test to return, test to stay. You know, uh, I, so I, I'm, again, I'm just mystified why we would think about not requiring that. Uh, when it's already in place, it's very convenient to do. It's been working and it's allowed us to stay in-person school, uh, for most of the year, even with very high rates of COVID. So, you know, I, I don't think this plan gives us the best chance to stay in school in person for that reason. The, uh, other things that I, you know, to be able to support this, I would have to see are some kind of, re, again, requiring a negative test and requiring a booster and require, requiring a higher quality mask. You know, so those aren't a part of it. So I, again, I, I can't support it. You know, at the, I'm, first and foremost, I'm, I'm current, I'm coming at this as a parent. You know, as I, as my wife and I were thinking about what we were going to do today, if, um, if we had not been an NTI, um, you know, we were seriously considering just keeping our child home and we still are. When we return to normal schooling, because we know that these procedures are going to mean that we have more people in school with COVID. Um, and COVID, I mean, COVID is serious. I mean, it's, you know, there's article in Scientific American, I was just reading about how a tsunami of disability is coming because of long COVID. Kids do not appear to be at less risk for long COVID than adults do. They appear to be at less risk for acute illness that could, uh, kill them quickly, but not for debilitating long COVID. So, um, to me, this is, um, you know, I think these recommendations are unnecessary. I think they're, I think they're reckless, um, frankly. And as a parent, first and foremost, I just can't support sending my kid to a school system that has these procedures. I'm finished and you're muted, Ms. Porter.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have any, uh, comments or questions before I call for the vote? Board Member Marshall.
Uh, really quickly, Chair Porter, just a point of clarification. So on this vote, uh, it seems to be two things here. With change to the guidelines and then granting Dr. Polio with the power to assign remote days, is that correct?
I believe that's correct, but it's, it's written up as, um, the way the motion is written is basically to motion to approve the revised JCPS COVID-19 full operations plan. So it doesn't spell that out, the two items specifically, but we can ask Kevin Brown if we need to spell it out specifically. If we, if, is that your question of Board Member Marshall? I would like for, uh, Kevin Brown to speak to that, please.
I think the, um, the intent was to have those together because I believe, and Amy Dennis, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we did incorporate reference to the, um, remote instruction in the operation plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So you can take a motion that would do both of those things. The board can also consider separate motions. If, if one motion fails and there's a desire for another part of the plan to stay in, stay in place while another part is not approved, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. I, I appreciate that. So, uh, I, I'll let the vote proceed at this time. But, uh, depending on that outcome, I may offer a motion at that time.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Marshall. And one question, uh, Dr. Polio, you said you had met with the union representatives and you all answered questions. Are they moving forward with us? Are they working, are they working with us? Are, are they, are there concerns that will cause them to not work with us? Yes or no, moving forward? I know you said you met with them today. You answered questions. They have supported everything up to this point. So is there support from the union representatives today after your meeting? Just a yes or no question?
All indications were yes, they are supportive.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments before I call for the vote? Or, Ms. Duncan, yes ma'am?
Yes, uh, Dr. Polio, um, of course, I, I think this was proposed to help districts address staff shortages and teacher shortages. So, um, the thinking is that it will help us reduce, reduce that. But you will monitor that if, uh, what we, if, if we approve this, I'm sure you would continue to monitor that so that we can see for sure if it's having that effect or not. Um, and if the cases show any difference, you will, uh, monitor that and, and let us know. Is that correct?
Yes, yes ma'am, that is correct. I mean, we have this as a standing item on every board meeting. I think we've had it in every board meeting at least for the past 12 months. So we will continue to do that. You know, honest, obviously we will stay in touch with the Kentucky State Health Department, our local metro health department, CDC when we can, and obviously, um, recommend any changes based on their guidance. Where, you know, we will continue to do that. But, you know, at any point, this board can decide to make a change to, to go back to a different number in our operations guidelines.
Good, thank you.
Okay, any other, uh, Dr. Chris, I see your hand up.
I, I was just gonna, I prefer that we consider this as two separate motions. Um, and take the motion to approve the remote instruction days separately. Cause I'm, I'm certainly for that and I don't want to presume, but I don't, I don't see a lot of resistance to that particular piece of it.
Okay, I will turn it back over to Kevin Brown. I think Board Member Marshall said he was okay with taking the initial first vote and then pulling out and, and making a, a separate motion after the first vote, vote if I heard Board Member Marshall correctly. But I just want to make sure that we get the vote, um, recorded as we move forward. So I would ask Kevin Brown, do we move forward with the recommended motion? And then be open to, uh, motion from board members after that vote to offer a separate vote? Or do we break it apart before we take the vote?
It, it can occur either way. And, um, you know, the, as long as the floor is open for motions, then obviously the chair can entertain the motion that has been contemplated. But it's also permissible for other motions from other members to come before. That's, that could be different than the anticipated motion. So it can occur either way.
Okay. So should I open up the floor for recommended motions before taking the vote on this? What I have, have read that the motion is to be, since there's been, um, two board members that have commented that they would like to see.
Since that's been questioned, I think that's appropriate.
Okay, uh, thank you. So, uh, Board Member Marshall, I would like to hear, uh, first of all, your motion and then, uh, we will get a motion and a second. And then we will also get a second motion and a second. Uh, we'll vote yours first and then go to Dr. Chris for the second motion. So basically, we're going forward with two motions. You said that you would like to put a second one on the table. So let's start with your motion first so that we can get that recorded and that Kevin Brown tells us that that's okay before we take the vote. So what is, what is your motion, uh, Board Member Marshall?
Uh, thank you, Chair Porter. My, my motion is going to be exactly what Dr. Chris's motion is going to be as well. That we, you know, offer a motion that we, uh, separate the, uh, powers of remote instruction to the superintendent uh, from the, uh, isolation recommendation of five days.
Okay. So there's a, a motion to separate the powers of the, uh, superintendent on the, uh, remote learning. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that, that is the motion that has been put on the floor first. So there is a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I ask a question.
Dr. Chris is the second to that motion?
Do we actually need a motion to separate it? Or does Mr. Marshall just make a motion to approve the remote instruction authorization?
Correct. If Mr. Marshall would amend his motion to, for, to approve the remote instruction portion, that will accomplish, I think, what we're going to do without having to vote three times.
Okay. So I'll offer an amendment to my motion, uh, that we take up the superintendent, uh, powers to assign remote instruction days at this time.
Okay. So there's a motion, um, and I, I will need to have a second since you have amended that. So, um, and Ms. Duncan, I see your hand. I'll get to you. I just want to make sure that we've got a second before I call on you. Uh, Dr. Schul. Is that a second? Yeah. Dr. Schul, are you seconding the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Now, Ms. Duncan, what are your comments?
I was seconding his motion.
Oh, okay, sorry. So we've got Dr. Schul and Ms. Duncan. I, I didn't, I thought you had a comment. I apologize.
No, that's all right. Thank you.
Okay. So we've got a motion, we've got a second. Any additional discussion before I call for the vote? I'm going to call each board member's name and you can say yes or no. We don't normally do this, but since we pulled it out, I think it's important that, get it recorded, that we get it recorded verbally correctly. Any other comments before I call the roll for the vote? Hearing none, uh, starting with Board Member McIntosh. What is your vote, please?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, Dr. Schul.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Board Member Duncan?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Board Member Marshall?
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Craig?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Diane Porter, yes. So that particular motion passes and it's unanimous. That's motion number one. Okay, motion number two. Dr. Chris, uh, Board Member Marshall, who wants to make the second motion? Cause we have split it up. So who wants to make the second motion?
I, I'm voting no, so I'm not going to make it.
Yeah, I'm the same. So I, I won't be making the second motion. Uh, somebody else is in support of changing the five days. I would ask them to make that motion.
Okay. Ms. Duncan, I see your hand up.
Yes, I, I move that we approve the new guidance that we've received from the CDC and the state, um, Department of Health and KDE.
Okay, from the CDE.
A second, that, Ms. Porter.
And KDE. And the second came from?
James Craig.
James Craig. And, uh, Board Member McIntosh, I think I saw your hand up. I don't want to ignore you if you had, um, was there something you wanted to say about the motion? I have a motion and a second.
I was going to second as well. I can't see, uh, Board Member Craig on my screen, so I wasn't aware he was.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion before I call for the vote? Hearing none. Um, we'll start with Board Member Ma- McIntosh for this particular motion.
I know we've changed the wording a couple of times, so I just want to be very clear on, on how I'm voting. Um, I do support adopting the, the recommendations from the medical professionals. So yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dr. Schul.
Uh, no, no ma'am.
Okay, uh, Ms. Duncan?
Yes.
Okay, Board Member Marshall?
No.
Thank you. Board Member Craig?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member, Dr. Chris?
No.
Did you say no?
No.
Okay, thank you. And so, um, Diane Porter, I vote no because it's dangerous, I think, for the district that I represent. So currently we have, uh, one, two, three, we have four no votes and three yes votes, votes. So the motion does not pass to move forward with reducing the days from 10 to five. And, um,
Chair Porter.
I'm sorry.
And Chair Porter, to clarify, just for those watching, everything remains the status quo. So if, um, what you were voting on was to vote no to the new recommendations, that was voted down. And so the, the current plan that's in place, um, the school operations plan stays in effect, just like it was in operation today in schools, across the district. And then the only thing the board did take action on was approving the remote, uh, the ability for the superintendent to utilize state, uh, providing remote instruction. I just wanted to clarify that since there may be some confusion for those watching.
Thank you for making it clear for everybody. And thank you, Angie, for making it clear in, in the minutes. So people are, are clear as to what we have done this evening. I thank you for your comments. I thank you for your vote. Uh, this is, uh, has been an important conversation for the board to move forward on and to have a conversation. So I appreciate your time and effort this evening. And currently it looks like it's, uh, looks like it's 6:09. So we've been here for a little bit, over an hour. As we move forward, there are things that are coming along that will require potential additional special call meetings and you will be notified in a timely manner when that has to happen. So at this time, is there a motion to adjourn this evening?
Chair Porter, really quick and ask a, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Um, cause the community may be wondering as well, can we, um, have this item on the agenda? For a future meeting, um, to maybe, once again, when there's more information, more time for us to get through our current, time to be able to bring this back to the table?
Yes, sir. Do you want it as added as an, uh, information item as we get more information? Is that your request, Board Member Marshall?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. That's duly noted and we will make sure that we have that in the minutes for, for today also. Um, as we move forward, because you're right, things are changing on a weekly basis. So it would be smart for us to do so. Thank you for that recommendation. At this time, uh, if, are there any other comments before I call for the motion to adjourn? I see no hands up. So at this time, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting, please? Board Member, uh, Dr. Chris, seconded by Board Member McIntosh. Thank you again, everyone, for your time, for being here this evening. And I'm not going to call the roll on this one. I don't normally have to call the roll on adjourning, so we're not going to do that tonight. If you'd like to adjourn, would you just please raise your hand, please, so we can see everybody that wants to adjourn? It's unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for participating tonight. Have a safe week and a safe evening. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.